At the end of September, there were eighteen hundred contingency plans for students receiving specialized services as in addition to their individual education plans. Eight hundred were completed for in-person students, K-12, and five hundred for virtual academy students. These plans were developed to ensure that we can still meet students' individual needs in a virtual environment. Student and family support. The communication plan is to continue educating our students, families, and staff on the health and safety practices after each break in our calendar. So as you know, next week, we will have two days of non-instruction due to the State Teachers Meeting, Education Minnesota. So using social media and our websites, the Communication Department will continue to push out videos, instructional posters, and procedures on mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing, and staying home when you are feeling ill. Also, building leaders will send out parallel pieces of information through newsletters, emails, and they're building social media accounts. An update on technology. Since the beginning of the school year, we have handed out six thousand learning devices. The tech team is working on improvements such as speeding up access for new students, exploring an unlimited plan for hotspots, and training to support substitutes. Moving on to activities. The Minnesota State High School League Board voted to permit winter sports. Winter sports are scheduled to begin from one to five weeks later than usual to minimize overlap with the fall sports seasons. There will also be a thirty percent reduction in games and matches, allowing for two, allowing for two per week. Minnesota State High School League also decided that fall sports will conclude with section championships. No decision was made on the winter sports postseason. Our athletic director, Gian Peck, continues to meet with conference leaders to discuss the impact for our students, coaches, and spectators. Our marching band also worked with the Burnsville High School leadership team and determined they would not be playing at the football games. The advisors cited several factors included but not limited to cold weather, limitation of spectators, limited performance time, and ability to practice. We will continue to work with the team at Burnsville High School to determine our next steps to provide opportunities for students and to ensure safe participation for our students, coaches, and families. Today, just earlier today, Minnesota Department of Education, MDH, and Minnesota State High School League updated their guidance for fall sports, particularly regarding spectators. So since this is new information, staff will be reviewing to determine any adjustments. Moving on to enrollment. As of October fifth, K-12 enrollment is seven thousand six hundred and thirty-one, and VPK through twelve, which is the voluntary pre-K through twelve, is seven thousand nine hundred and five. There's a full report that will be posted after my report, after the board meeting with more enrollment data. Moving on to operations. Previously, I mentioned that we had six first days, and so bus drivers and students managed it well. So kudos to Smitty and Sons, their drivers, the whole support team at Smitty and Son, as well as students following the safety protocols. And so I really want to thank everyone for that smooth transition in the fall. Operations is working on transportation plans for an in-person ACT administration. So that's one example of some tailored transportation that they are providing. And so now I'll turn it over to Amina Ofteadal and Stephanie White.
Chair and all, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. I'm really excited to be here tonight to share with you some of the some of the things that we have in place that will support the learning environments for all students. I would like to share my screen if that is possible. Tonight, Director Stephanie White and I will be sharing some information from the CISA's Department, Systems Improvement and Student Achievement, and the Special Education Department. One of the things to keep into in mind with the CISA Department moving forward is that as we began the year, our intention was to provide instructional models that responded to the information and feedback that we gathered from students, parents, and staff last spring and over the summer. The distance learning two-point-o model included a minimum of a hundred and twenty minutes of live student-teacher interaction each day. This powerful engagement tool, as well as teachers setting specific schedules, has set us apart from our neighboring districts and provide a school environment in each student's location beyond the school's brick and mortar. In some middle schools and high school classrooms, it even includes students at home joining their peers in class virtually. This has required even more technology solutions for connectivity and devices. Keep in mind that we are maintaining three instructional models simultaneously, and this requires innovation to deliver differentiated instruction and support for students. Utilizing our academic support teachers as elementary pod instructors makes what I need or win time a very different experience this year. CISA Coordinator Janet Golden and multilingual coordinator Maria Arago, collaborating with special ed supervisor Amy Pyatroski, are working with each building principal to build a workable support and enrichment structure that can serve in-person, distance-learning, and virtual academy students beyond core instruction. This includes fulfilling the educational service plans for students with disabilities and multilingual students learning English. Technology and CISA staff have collaborated to create common expectations for organization and navigation in CSOW and Schoology to assist students and parents as they access the learning platforms. Our K-five curriculum coordinator, Bethany Van Adel, has been leading teams of teachers to create a guide and support for the hybrid distance-learning instructional model. This includes a step-by-step guide for elementary teachers to develop the face-to-face and distance-learning days. Curriculum pacing and lessons are collaboratively written and available to all teachers, including those in virtual academy. Activities have been identified for best delivery method: face-to-face, video conference, and independent practice. Our digital learning specialist, prior to moving into elementary pods, created a technology skill, scope, and sequence with lessons for each grade band. The intention being to build student capacity and skills to be more effective for their remote learning time. Also, classroom assessments are a valuable tool to measure student progress toward content standard mastery, and students will continue to complete their classroom assessments for progress reporting, including using district report cards in addition to conferences with parents. District benchmarking assessments are also currently underway, using in-person whenever possible and remote administration when necessary. Last week, we, the middle school, administered twenty-seven hundred assessments through FastBridge online services with little or no support from technology, allowing the tech support folks to continue to work in the areas of greatest need responding to students and teachers. This required the support of the assistant principals and deans in the building, and they were outstanding. In the secondary buildings, building leadership teams, building principals, and 612 curriculum coordinator Franny Becker have developed schedules and systems that support hybrid learning and distance learning. The key to putting together the schedules was ensuring that regardless of whatever choice of model made by the students, the students would have equitable access to courses. Middle school was able to transition to their block schedule as part of the middle school redesign. It has been adjusted to fit the health and safety requirements, but rather than alternating days for science and social studies, they alternate semesters, one semester for science and one semester for social. Middle school electives and exploratories are being delivered remotely for both hybrid and virtual academy. High school is incorporating more classroom live streaming to ensure that students have access to single-section courses, and virtual academy teachers are part of all the content area meetings and planning. Currently, English Language Arts is aligning the grade nine and ten courses with the eleven-twelve scope and sequence for writing and literature reflecting multiple perspectives in literature with more inclusive lists of authors and texts. Using the best practices identified in the blended learning cohorts provided by tech director Rachel Gordon, teachers are being asked to use this lesson design framework, which incorporates digital tools into planning and practice, and utilizing over twenty-five district-vetted digital tools that are either free or have been purchased, the Digital Lesson Planning Guide offers multiple options for teachers and students. The expectations for high-quality lessons are that they engage the student, assume high expectations for all students, and build capacity for digital independence. The CISA team is also very focused on providing the professional development and support for teachers in all three of the models. There was extended workshop week and new teacher onboarding. Actually, last week, we onboarded four additional elementary teachers, so it continues to be ongoing as we hire. There is instructional support for elementary hybrid teachers, new or returning to the classroom. There is ongoing technology training and support for video conferencing. Teams developing elementary literacy, math, and technology lessons, and professional development on teaching in the block or extended time and avid school-wide. Along with supporting hybrid distance learning, the regular work of curriculum continues simultaneously. We continue to work toward district equity and anti-racism work through CPSS. K-five math curriculum review and implementation continues. The six-twelve next-generation science standards implementation continues. Six-eight social-emotional learning curriculum implementation is ongoing, along with the, as part of the middle school redesign. Avid school-wide for secondary and moving demonstration site status, moving toward demonstration site status at both buildings. The grade-six literacy implementations of being a reader was worked on over the summer. We did K-eight FastBridge assessment implementation through remote assessments this fall. We have the Advanced Learning and STEM Instruction for Coding through the Universal Plus Grant, and K-eight Pathways Implementation through the arts continues through this year. So it's been a lot of things that are going on in the CISA Department, but we feel as though we are supporting our teachers as they are moving forward and delivering instruction to our students. And now I'd like to hand it over to Director Stephanie White.
Thank you, Amina. Good evening, Chair Alt, Directors, and Superintendent Battle. Thanks so much for this opportunity to tell you what our special education services look like under all those amazing offerings that Amina just highlighted. Through the work that the CISA Department is doing, we really have become a strong triangle. Director Gordon in Technology, Director Ofteadal in Curriculum Instruction, and then the Special Education Department really are collaborating at a level that we've never done before. And we believe that through this alignment and collaboration together, we are providing the very best services we can for all students. As we're thinking about special education students, the two overarching principles that we are considering as we're debating on what model is best for each individual student is the ability to follow health and safety and the ability to access and engage in distance learning. We want our students to have the most access to the marvelous offerings that we have in our district. And so those are the two beginning lenses from which we look at. Dr. Battle highlighted this, that we have created contingency learning plans for all of our special education students, if they're in virtual academy or in person, which helps us flex between whatever model they choose or whatever model we happen to be in to maximize the learning and the general education curriculum. Our priorities, again, are health and safety, the relationships with our students, and we're so thankful to have all this time in person with our students and continuing to grow our relationships virtually with the students there. And then, of course, our educational and social-emotional needs of the students receiving special ed services. Special Ed is notorious for being flexible in the first place, and we continue to hone our skills in these models as well. Again, our top priority is to give all students access to these amazing offerings and opportunities. And so the work that we do is always thinking about how we can provide access through accommodations, modifications, and of course, specialized instruction. And one of the things that's really different this year is some of our individual service providers, occupational therapists, our speech therapists, we now have a physical therapist that's on our staff, providing their services virtually, and I'm using what they call telehealth. So a live teacher or therapy provider, and then a student as well. And we're practicing this even in our preschool classrooms so that they can be prepared if we do end up going to distance learning. We have around five hundred and fifteen students in our distance-learning school, Virtual Academy. They're learning at specific times in a synchronous or live meeting. Special ed teachers provide specialized instruction live. Sessions could be individual, or they could be in small groups. And again, speech, occupational therapy, and physical therapy provide that teletherapy model. Services that were previously face to face have now moved virtual, and of course, that's all for health and safety. In our hybrid model, we have around eight hundred students, and these numbers are really reflecting K-12. And they do two days a week and three days a week at home. The majority of our resource students are assigned to those two days, just like all students, and then three days synchronous. The special ed services are adjusted to meet the specific needs of each individual student, and that goes back to those contingency learning plans. There's likely not one plan that looks the same. Students, we also have students who traditionally would have most of their day in a special ed setting, and we have offered those students four days a week. So they come Monday, Tuesday, they're home, like all students practicing their distance-learning skills, and then back with us on Thursday, Friday. I can't tell you how amazing the services are that our teachers are providing in these settings. These are the kiddos that we really work closely with, both in instruction but physically, helping them do all kinds of tasks and skills. And our teachers have been amazing in adapting the services they're providing to make sure that the students are safe and that they remain safe.
Thank you, Stephanie and Amina, and that concludes our report, Chair Alt.
Great. Thank you very much. Always, always an in-depth and informative report. Board members, I'll open it up for questions and comments. Anyone? Director Miller.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for that. That's very interesting and informative. I appreciate it. And it was full of facts and statistics, which is excellent. I'll add a little personal touch to it. I'll say that my middle schooler, who thrives in a structured environment, has really enjoyed and made advantage of this change versus what happened in the spring, so it's been effective for him. My fourth grader is plodding right along and enjoying her classes and the high touch she's getting in her hybrid model. And my kindergartner, the second day he had been there, I went to pick him up, so the next day was going to be Wednesday. He was going to be home, walking back to the car, and he said, "Dad, I have a Zoom call at ten o'clock tomorrow and a Zoom call at one o'clock. I know how to turn on my computer and get into it." And I thought, geez, you have more Zoom calls than I have tomorrow, so it was fantastic. So you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate it. I do have a question for, potentially not for you two, for Dr. Battle or Stacy Soline, but we have posed this before, asked this before. I would like to eventually see something about how we're doing for class size for the virtual academy. It continues to be a concern. I'm not sure. Maybe it's been resolved and solved. I haven't heard anything in recent times, but I know early on, we have some struggles in getting matched up. I understand the reasonings behind that, but we do need to get to a completion point where where we're at a class size that's more in alignment with what this board expects in our district. So I'd appreciate getting some information in the future about that, and not just an average, but a breakdown, so I can make sure that there's not some pretty bad outliers out there that then I can counter any rumors I hear. So that's my takeaway or question for at least for the future, unless you have, I'm assuming you don't have immediate data in front of you, but thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller. I do have a brief response, and we can definitely get some more detailed information for you. Director Ofteadal mentioned that they provided training for three new teachers last week. Actually, I believe the three were for the virtual academy, or for the virtual academy. So I'll let Stacy provide some more detail, so we should have some more regular class size.
We had a new teachers start on Monday, and we reassigned on Monday at the elementary level. All of our class sizes, the averages are lower than our max, so the elementary is in really good shape. Secondary, we may have different hotspots, different classes that are around forty students, maybe a little bit over forty students. And again, we talked earlier that we're looking at about ten percent, class size is ten percent larger than what our in-person class sizes would be, and that we're still in line with that as well in most places, so I can provide you more information, especially with the elementary, but we're in alignment with where we should be in most places.
Great. Thank you, Stacy. Director Chester.
Thank you, Chair Alt. My question, well, it's a question in a statement, so, and it's probably for Stephanie. So K-11, a week ago aired an investigative information about families with kids with IEPs or with higher needs or special ed, and the needs where it's conflicting with their in-home supports, because there's an expectation for districts to be providing that educational services, but oftentimes, there's other components of just life skills that happen in the instructional setting in a school environment, but if school's not in session and they're at home, their DHS is not, is conflicting with wanting to provide in-home support services while there's in-school instruction. And so I was wondering how our district is addressing some of that with a lot of families who may have in-home supports now being, not being able to access them during distance learning time.
Thanks for the question. I mean, we really are in an unprecedented time with that, because with our students with disabilities, we would always put the needs of the student first, and we have to think of their health and safety and the health and safety of others first during the pandemic, and so that puts us in some precarious, difficult situations. What we've found and what's been working for us is the amazing relationships that our teachers and staff have with families out there to make those decisions as a collaborative team and to make sure that those student needs are met. And we are having lots and lots of collaborative IEP meetings, Individual Education Plan meetings, in order to solve the barriers that families are experiencing and that our school staff is experiencing. They're difficult decisions, and under the conditions that we're in right now, we are not allowed to go in the home. And so that does create difficulties for families and for students. And we want to really partner with them as much as we can. Some of the things that we've done is gone out to meet with families outside. And we can't go in the home, but we've been in the driveways, we've been in the front yards, and we've had lots and lots of Zoom meetings. We have material deliveries that are happening, lots of consultations with outside agencies that are working with families. We're working more and more with our counties to make sure that if there are other community resources that can support the family during this time, while we are all having to prioritize health and safety, we're doing that as well. And so that, and we're determined to get to the solution that fits the team. And so that's our recipe today, and so far, I think it's working, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Director Schatz.
Thank you. So thanks to Superintendent Battle and the staff for the continued great work to address the needs of our students and families during this rather tricky time in education, so I appreciate that very much. Clearly, you're working as a team, and that reflects what we do here in this district. We work as a team for the betterment of our students, so thank you for that. My question is about, maybe for Amina, but perhaps for all of you, is what opportunities students and families have to provide feedback on how the distance and hybrid learning is going, you know, not just for the virtual academy students, but also for the hybrid students that are working virtually. When they're in the classroom, we can kind of see, you know, how things are going for them, you know, but what opportunity do we have for those students and families to provide feedback on their experience, probably especially for virtual academies, since we don't see them in the classroom ever?
So thank you for the question, Amina. I'll lead off with our discussion we had at Executive Leadership Team. We did talk about how can we survey to get feedback about the opening of school. And so I'll let staff fill in some more information about how we think we're going to approach it. Go ahead, Amina.
Sure. I just wanted to say that parent-teacher conferences come to us at the end of October, and that is one of our prime opportunities to collect information from families about the start of the school year as well as goals and progress for their students. So we will be utilizing the time when we are meeting with parents and providing an opportunity for survey at that time.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Sorry, I have a little falt, and so is that the, so other than, okay, so that's the end of October, and so what are parent-teacher conferences going to look like this year? Yeah, because, yeah, I mean, there's, and that's, you know, I absolutely, that is an absolutely terrific time to provide feedback and receive feedback from parents and students if they are present. If, thinking about my students and me as a parent, I can certainly, I can certainly contact my teacher, I can certainly, you know, who may or may not, you know, you know, who can kind of address the, you know, some of the issues, certainly, you know, the principal and things like that. But the, yeah, I'm shooting to, that's sometimes a lot more about academics than it is kind of about how it's working, you know, as a whole. Like, does my child, because that assumes a lot of kind of ability of the student and the family to understand how a student learns. And if they're struggling, they may think it's the subject matter or something. So how are we really able to kind of get at what the root of might be that my child struggles to learn in this way? And we didn't, we don't really know that's a fact.
So parent-teacher conferences will be held virtually. We are not bringing families into the buildings in numbers and having them, you know, moving in and out of the buildings. So they will be scheduled virtually. And I just wanted to be clear, it's an opportunity at each of those conferences to also not only talk And I just wanted to be clear, it's an opportunity at each of those conferences to also not only talk about the academic growth of the individual student, but to also deliver the invitation to complete the survey about the process overall and about the starting of school. And then have some, so that those two things are separate. We just take that opportunity because we are talking with the parent face to face to say, here, please complete this survey for us. So that's one of the ways that we can separate that out. And we continue to work with families, principals and sports staff in the buildings continue to work with families for students who are not being successful with whatever structures are in place. And really digging down into what are the root causes of those and what are the things that we can do as a district to adapt, adjust, and eliminate barriers.
Okay, thank you. I was not clear that, that, that there was a survey and the parent teacher conference. Okay, great. All right. Thank you. All right, Cheryl.
Additionally, Erin Tinklinberg and I, in our planning for the launch of the school year, we held Zoom meetings with parents as well as students. And so we also plan to replicate that again, as well as making sure that we have our cultural liaisons to get some feedback from the parents they work with. So yes, we'll also get some student feedback also. Director Schatz.
Great, thank you. I actually have a, a double question. Just, just for clarity, the survey that parents will be invited to take during conferences, that will be sent out separately to everybody? Yeah. Okay. So it's not simply those people that attend conferences who will get the survey. Okay, great. Thank you. Board members, any other questions or comments? No? I have a couple. Just a comment, just really appreciating all the additional information that you provided about the rigor that we're really focused on, both in-person and virtually, particularly the curriculum review at the high school and you know, really making sure that many perspectives are being included in the work that, that the students are doing. And also the kind of the re-examining of when time, the what I need time for elementary students and making sure that both the English learners and special ed kids beyond core are really getting what they need and the, and the support that they need. So I, I thank you. I really appreciated that. I guess my question, I have two questions. One is, we, I just want to make sure, Amina, I understood your, your comment about the avid demonstration schools. We still have one middle school that's still a demonstration school. We just want to get the second one to that status.
Right. And District Director Becker has, is just really pleased with the progress that has been made at Eagle Ridge since Niccolat already is a demonstration school. But the external views and reviews from avid leadership externally have been very, very positive as Eagle Ridge makes progress in that direction.
Great, thank you. And then kind of a technology and access question. How are we doing with 100% access for students and families to, to be able to get into the, the virtual learning? Hi, Rachel. That's probably a question for you.
Hello, good evening. Yeah, it's, it's an ongoing process. Definitely. We have, at this point, we are caught up with all of the hotspot requests that we have had coming in. And I just want to kind of say thank you to the, the hard work that our social workers and our cultural liaisons, our associate principals and our principals, and down to individual teachers that have been working with individual students to find out what situations are happening where they may not be connecting into class. And then if it is an access issue for tech, for internet, that we are able to solve that. So at this point, we do have an inventory of hotspots still, so we can, we can meet the needs immediately. It's been a really interesting process because as Amina was talking about, one of those things that has really been wonderful has been that 120 minutes of synchronous learning that we are providing our students, which has been a foundational piece that has provided some success here in the last few weeks, is that that actually is a, is a quite taxing thing on the internet system. So families that have internet in their home, there are some variations that we're working through to help, help them. So even today, we were working with a student at one of our schools and their family to provide ethernet cables to hook up directly to their modem for a faster experience for that student. And so I feel really proud of the fact that we're at the individual student level now in solving those problems. And so it's been a lot of work. We've handed out a lot of hotspots and a lot of support, but it's, it's definitely been one of the things that's been really fulfilling this last few weeks.
Awesome. Thank you, Rachel. And just, just a curious question again, Rachel, for you. Are we aware of any areas in the district where there are just dead zones in terms of access and what the hotspots are able to, to support?
We haven't found any, luckily because of our suburban, you know, geographic location, we don't have a lot of dead zones. We, we were finding that we were having some of our hotspots having problems because they had not been updated to the unlimited plan. And we have now remedied that. So those are now moving. So we haven't seen anything. However, in anticipation that we might have a few areas that we're not able to solve using our current T-Mobile hotspots, we are getting some hotspots in on a different network as well. So we have, we would only have a few of those and we would only need those if absolutely needed in an area.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, this, I, this report is always, as I said, you know, and as other board members have alluded to, it's always very informative and really gives us a lot, a lot more, you know, greater understanding of what you all are doing and everything that's going on in our schools, even though, you know, we personally may not witness it. So thank you again for, for a great report. Next. We're staying with COVID. We'll be receiving a report from Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services about COVID funding updates. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you and good evening, Cheryl, Board Directors and Superintendent Battle, and those listening. As we begin tonight, we want to cover a bit of information regarding our funding that we have received through state and federal means. So at this point, I'd like to share my screen if that's okay.
Lisa, we were seeing it initially.
We, okay, so are you seeing? Okay, are you seeing the presentation?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, perfect. I thought you were seeing a different part of my screen. So great. Thank you so much for taking time this evening to hear about the information related to our funding. As we take a look at this, this is funding that was notified to us somewhat, I mean, we knew of the CARES funding as we get into this, but some of this came to us fairly recently. So as we take a look at this agenda, we will review the federal and state COVID-19 funding and some other funding, the purpose and allocation for each of those different sources. Our 191 proposed use of funds for how are we planning to use them, county funding and our coronavirus relief funding with some next steps indicated as well as this is going to be an ongoing process for a while. Okay, so as we start, there's lots and lots of acronyms. That's typical in my world, but this has really been just a step up in the volume of acronyms we're dealing with. So this, this screen will help us to kind of know as we go through the rest of the presentation, what some of these words mean. When we talk about CARES, we're talking about the coronavirus aid relief and economic security. A part of the CARES is broken down into two pieces. One is ESSER, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. And the other part of it is the GEAR, which is the CARES Governor's Emergency Education Relief. So CARES, ESSER, and GEAR are all kind of one in the same package, but they are, they're, they're referred to for different reasons. Okay? And they have different purposes, as we'll talk about. Then we have our CARES funding that the Dakota County received and that we've made a request to see if they would have a portion allocated to us. And then there's the CARES funding that Scott County received that there too, they had allocated a portion to us as a member of their county and as, for the students that reside within Scott County. Then we have our CRF allocation, which is the coronavirus relief funds. So this is more recent and the CRF funding is a very limited period of time. It basically starts from July 1st and goes only through December 30th. So it's a much shorter period of time. We'll get into that in a moment. And then we have our Dakota Electric Grant. So when we take a look at just the table that kind of compares them, that's what you're seeing here now in front of you. The CARES ESSER funds is the first column of numbers that you see. And so you can tell that there's a 90% and a 9.5% amount and they, they are being handled differently and treated differently as there was some pending law change that was being requested. So we know that together, that's, that's about a $1.5 million there. And then you have your GEAR's funds. The GEAR funds are intended to be the amount of $295,665. Our CRF is the last column to the right and that is a $2.7 million that you see listed there. The dates that these are effective all are, they do vary. The CARES funds run from March, when this all began with the COVID through September of 22, 2022. So these funds, these 1.5 million are intended to be able to be used all the way through September of 2022. That's true of the GEAR as well. The CARES funds, as I mentioned, that's a much shorter and smaller time period that we're talking about. We have yet to submit our final application and budget for the CARES. But we will be doing that. We're going to be utilizing some for the past school year. So on that 339,000 you see at the bottom on the left is for fiscal year 20, which is the year we're closing out and auditing. And so as a result, then we'll have an application for fiscal year 20 for CARES and we'll have an application for fiscal year 21. And assuming there's still some funds remaining, we would then utilize that in fiscal year 22 with a separate and distinct application for 22. The GEAR funds, we anticipate, we have not yet submitted that, but we know where they're going towards as you'll hear a little later the detail of. And so we know for fiscal year 20, we're not going to be utilizing the GEAR's funds in that year. We are instead going to use them in FY '21. And I anticipate those will be fully used, as you'll see in a moment. The CRF funds, that's solely for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. And so we'll move on to the next slide, which talks a little more about that CARES ESSER funds. So when we talk about last school year and our audited numbers that we're looking at, we're working on those audit entries now. And we're anticipating around 339,000 to be spent there. The general fund will show 196,729 being spent in areas of hourly wages for planning for PPE. And that does stand for personal protective equipment. It seems a very common phrase anymore, but just to clarify what that is, for supplies and technology. On $96,710 will be spent on our transportation delivery routes that we did last spring. For community service, there is $142,436 for childcare hourly wages that were identified as being solely due to that COVID time period. And so for fiscal year 20, there, that amount will be coded to the CARES ESSER funds. The remaining funds for CARES ESSER will happen in fiscal year 21 and hopefully there will still be some as well, still available for fiscal year 2022 if needed. So we talk about GEAR. As I mentioned, we're not doing any for last fiscal year because all of our extra Chromebooks that we purchased came in after July 1st. As the spring, we really made use of what we had available in our, you know, storage and other needs that we, we may have been holding those machines for in the classrooms. We, we sent them all out to everybody. And so we made that happen for last spring and we did not purchase anything at that last minute because frankly, there was a, there was also an issue of being able to receive them in time. So our order actually was received after July 1st and we are now in a position where we are one-to-one ratio at this time. The total cost of that purchase that was related to the Chromebooks necessary was $420,000. You can see that's a larger amount than the GEAR funds that are available. So we'll code 295,665 towards GEAR. And then the remaining amount of that cost of Chromebooks, we would consider as part of our CR fund, CRF allocation. And I'll talk in a moment as to why I say it in the way I did. There may be another means to cover those funds and we'll talk about that. For our CARES Dakota County, in early September, we did share with Dakota County our enrollment numbers and specifically those numbers of students that we know to be residing within Dakota County, similar to what we had done for Scott, and I'll talk about that in a second. But the group of Dakota County superintendents also met prior to September and they, they discussed how would we utilize and what is our need when it comes to something that is a shared need for the county as well as a school district. And that's where it was determined that childcare and internet connectivity are the two main things that are most problematic for our families. And so with that in mind, we asked for a, an allocation to be determined for each school district within Dakota County through the funds that they had received through CARES. Our total request as a group of Dakota County superintendent school districts, superintendents in their school districts is 8,333,477. And then as we take a look at what was our specific request, $585,650 was intended for childcare reimbursement for the period of March through November and technology connectivity is $35,280. We are still awaiting determination from Dakota County as to how, then if there will be an allocation of funds through their CARES funds. For Scott County in September of 2020, we, we were notified that $51,094 would be allocated to our school district. So we have already identified the costs there related to childcare in the period of March 1st through November 30th is what their allocation allows us to spend it during that period of time. So those, those expenses have been identified and they're basically at the same sites that are located and serving our, our families that are in the Scott County area. So this works well. The expenditures, we just need to show them proof of evidence of that and in the required format. So we'll be doing that in October. Then lastly, I want to talk a little bit about our CR funds, our coronavirus relief funds. This allocation is $2.7 million. September 26th is when we had received approval from MDE of our proposed allocation, application. And we had submitted a budget as well. Now, we can work on that budget with MDE as far as adjustments that may be required, but what that meant to produce the necessary documents to that point was a review of all of our expenditures thus far. And then an estimate of, estimate of what it is that we would anticipate before the end of December. The challenge for us is we need to make sure that not only do we incur the cost, but we also report them and receive the funds reimbursed back down through the system all by December 30th. Because it's a little different than in past where you have time to make that paperwork and stuff happen. You gotta have it all done by the end of the, end of December for us to be able to receive the funds. Two projects were identified that did require pre-approval of even submitting the application. So we did do that. Those two projects will address another layer of protection to our, which would include ventilation filters within our HVAC systems across all our schools. And a second project was identified to address our front office and our health office protections for employees in these spaces. As I mentioned, the funds needed to be, need to be used and As I mentioned, the funds needed to be need to be used and everything completed by December 30. Our budget that we submitted is laid out in this format. So you can see kind of how we're planning to spend those funds. The challenge for us is just sometimes you you estimate a certain amount for salaries or wages and it might change. So we want to be flexible that way and be monitoring that on a regular basis. So we can ensure that we're fully utilizing this. As I mentioned earlier about the technology piece, for the amount that is necessary, the the dollars that we've identified for those Chromebooks is clearly eligible under the CR funding. But if we have expenditures in other areas that actually make better sense to utilize the CR funds, we will do so. As we know, we also still do have some other possibilities for funding of those Chromebooks if necessary. But they're the clearly eligible. We're just needing that flexibility of being able to, is it technology or is it salaries and wages, depending upon how those estimates come through to actual. All right, Dakota County, or sorry, Dakota Electric Grant, we received a grant from Dakota Electric. $25,000 has been received for the use of bringing our internet connectivity. This will fund 100 families during our 2020, 2021 school year. So that that's very helpful to us. And then additionally, they 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 added in an extra $2,500 as a bonus and that we have received towards our COVID-19 costs incurred in delivering food to our community families. So we really appreciate that generosity. For our fiscal year 2019, 2020, as the audit is still in process, the final impact to the fund balance is going to be in our report to the school board in the audited data on November 12. And I will say, though, that we are anticipating the actual results are improved from the budgeted projections. So we'll share more about that at in November. Our assumptions for this school year of 2020, 2021 and beyond, this is something that is going to be with us for a while as we anticipate that the impact to of COVID-19 on our finances will probably go through 2023 fiscal year. For example, unemployment costs that we're incurring now, they become an adjustment two years down the line on the levy. And so when you incur expenses higher than what was estimated two years ago, then those actual expenditures, they they result in an adjustment then later down the road. So at this time, we have not heard of any probation to our current year fiscal year funding. There is concern that possibly some of our funding formulas might be adjusted down. We haven't heard that for certain yet either for the current year. There are lots of upcoming conferences and sessions that are related to COVID and cares funding and even our CR funds. For example, we learned of one just today that's being held next week. So these are, these are topics that are constantly changing, and we're just wanting to stay stay in tune and make sure that we're accomplishing not only the necessary deadlines that need to be met, but also making sure that we're maximizing the use of these funds as best possible. For the for the future, for fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 23, at this moment, we would anticipate utilizing 0% increase on the funding formulas. Not knowing exactly what the impact is going to be at a state level and how that's going to flow down through on the legislation. So that is the plan at this time. For next steps, we're wrapping up those journal entries for last year. We're monitoring our current year budget and actual expenses as they relate to the CRF allocation. And we'll be completing those necessary steps for the Esser and gear applications and budgets. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Board members, I will open it up for questions, comments. Director Hume.
Yeah, I just, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was curious to learn a little bit more, I think it was slide 11, about the HVAC ventilation improvements and employee protections that are like, what what are some examples of that, I guess, is what I'm curious about.
I knew that would be a question. So I have up on my screen the email that we had sent. So I wanted to have it up because this gets a little technical. But what we found is that we've, we know that our ventilation system that we have is up to par, and it meets all the requirements. What we did, though, is we did take a look and in brought in a consultant just to kind of take a look at things and help us to define what it is that we could do as another layer of protection. And we found that if we were focused on the main offices and our health offices, we would be looking at what it is that we can do to improve that air quality. And as a result, there's some research and the upgrades that are recommended is a needlepoint bipolar ionization, which reduces the viruses, spores, and bacteria in the air. So it's a special filter process that's placed within our, actually within our vents in our HVAC system. And it does that, then it ionizes the air and further eliminates and reduces those viruses, spores, and bacteria. So that is the project that you see listed there in the first first bullet.
Is there a timeline on that one? Sorry.
Everything has to be completed by December. So yes, that is.
Got it. Thanks.
And we're trying to do it at all of our sites. And so that's they're they're hard at it, you know, there's the planning of the project, there's getting all the equipment ordered and then installed.
Sure.
And then the second bullet is regarding our front office and health areas, and it's pretty much the kind of plastic barriers that you see and and finding a way to make that a little bit more permanent in those in those settings.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Schatz, I believe you were next.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. I I know this is a lot of work in a really tight timeframe to take to find and take advantage of these funds, which are outside of, you know, what we're used to for funding opportunities. So I appreciate you and your diligence in finding them and working through what those what the funding is and the requirements. And I I didn't know that we had a kind of a Dakota County consortium for deciding that the that childcare and access were kind of priorities. But, you know, that makes that makes perfect sense. I mean, those are the certainly the two areas that go across across school districts and the needs that we have. So that's that's a really nice shows really nice cooperation between our districts in Dakota County. So my, I just want a clarification on slide four, page four, where it talks about the funding updates. It has Esther and gear are yet to be submitted. And so everything else, this is March 22, September 2022. So we these are the two areas that are not don't are not done, are not doing in December. Everything else is, is that right? These are the longer term projects.
Yeah, actually, the due date for these applications for the current fiscal year is March. So it's a very unique situation. However, these applications, we have the application all ready to go. It's just fine tuning it. We wanting to make it as close to possible as to audited numbers so that there's absolutely no, no adjustments to the previous year. So it's just a matter of getting that finalized and then submitting it.
Okay. And then these are the two, as you described here, and as listed here, the purpose are much broader than the kind of, I guess, the local grants or the as the county grants are. They have a much more expansive scope of funding than the other ones.
Exactly. And that's where we're, we're really taking a look at the costs that we've incurred and identifying now where's the best fit for this to make sure that we are maximizing the use of the funds available to us.
And then so for the Esther, then this has a list of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 items here. Is this some some money will go to each of them? We have, we have some somehow calculated what what that money, how that money is allocated between each of those 10 items. It's kind of a lot of items to fund.
Yeah, these, this is, these are items that are taken straight from the application information and allows for us to use any or all. So we may not choose to use all of those different items, but this is the breadth of what that those funds are able to be utilized for.
Okay. And we don't have to state that in the application, what we're going to specifically use them for?
When we, when we submit that application, we need to be particular about the essentially, we're marking all of those areas simply because as we go through, there might be some hourly wages related to this or to that. And so we ended up, as we went through the application and preparing it, we're marking them all. Because the other thing about this is, as we move into 21, we also include our nonpublics as well. And so they may, they may choose an area that we didn't, for example. So we want to make sure that's all inclusive.
Okay. Okay. So we're some citing some dollar amount, estimated dollar amount to each one of these areas. And is there flexibility? And but there's flexibility in what that ultimate number turns out to be.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. So this is like the broad list of, you know, this is where you could spend it and take your pick of where you where you're finding it most needed. And then there's the budget application you submit to say, here's how we're going to plan to spend it in this fiscal year. And the dollar amounts we anticipate. And then as we move through the year, we can adjust that so that it more accurately reflects what our actuals are. And then when we submit our actuals, it's just like our federal grants that we do, and they reimburse based only on our actual expenses.
Okay, perfect. That helps very much. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Director Schatz. Director Courier.
Oh, dear. Thank you. Lisa, I just want to express my gratitude for the page where you took all those abbreviations and gave us the codes and the and the, sometimes we don't do that. And I don't, and as much as I've been in education all of these years, I printed this page off. So as I went through and and read your report, I I referred back to this to keep it straight. So thank you very much for this page.
Any other questions? Okay, I just have, I just want to second the gratitude. I really appreciate that education finance is not simple to begin with, and COVID just adds another layer. And so being able to pull this information together and make it relatively easily digestible, it's just, just really great. Thank you. I guess just, I had just one clarification which you had already covered, and I just want to make sure I understand. So basically, in terms of like, we're very fortunate to have a tech levy.
Yes.
And where we can, what I'm hearing you saying is that where we can, we will try to direct the cares funding that could be used for technology elsewhere. So that we're maximizing the other areas that we might need to provide services and support and kind of use our tech levy specifically for a technology rather than using the cares funding for technology when we already have a way to pay for it.
Right, because your technology levy that we receive on an annual basis, that is available as a restricted fund, right? So as we've talked about, our goal is to utilize those restricted funds first before we do general funds. So we have expenditures that are necessary for COVID that are otherwise going to use general unassigned fund balances. We'll use the CRF funds first, right? And yet, if now I'm down to a point where, okay, I've got those all addressed, and I don't have any other needs, then then I can look at, you know, what's the next layer? And so technology is that next one we go to. Because we also know that we have plenty of technology needs, and if we need to, we will absolutely then make another order. But we know now that those orders are also months out.
Got it. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, I think we will move on to the student representative report. Nicole May, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let me just pull up. Hello, board. For the past month and a half, students at VHS have been adjusting to hybrid in the virtual academy. Though it's been tricky at times with connection failures, it has been a relatively steady transition. An amazing subject that multiple caring teachers have brought into our virtual classroom is a discussion of race and racism. I've personally had many teachers assign assignments and made inclusive discussions on the current events of racial profiling, systemic racism, and police brutality. My class was even lucky enough to have a discussion with Mrs. Bakair on her and our experiences with racism. It's been such a great learning experience for many that weren't informed prior to the discussions. On the other hand, multiple students have voiced their concern about the load of work they receive. They feel overwhelmed with work, family life, college applications, ACT prep, and on top of all that schoolwork. Our student body hopes that teachers will become more informed with our hectic lifestyles at this point in time and accommodate their workload with our current lifestyle. Thank you, and that is all for this report.
Thank you very much, Nicole May. Next, we'll go to our superintendent report, Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Alt and Directors of the Board. Tonight, I want to highlight a couple of partnerships that have already or will provide opportunities for students to find and pursue their pathways. The first is a grant through the Minnesota Department of Education for $80,000 that will support our pathways model at elementary level by engaging students and supporting staff in the area of computer science. The funding, which could be continued for two years, and we may receive an additional 200,000 is especially intended to help identify students in underrepresented groups who have a talent and interest in computer science. The second partnership is the with the Greater Twin Cities United Way in which a pilot group of 15 Burnsville High School students participated and earned money in a four-week summer internship and sustainability program. The students received relevant work, exposure, and experiences, which is a core tenet of the District 191 Pathways Model at the high school level. As part of the experience, students identified their pathway interests, interviewed employees in that career field, developed a plan of action to accomplish their goals, published a video on the importance of workplace skill development, and also created a professional resume. They also completed online modules that helped them better understand workplace competencies like attitude, appearance, dependability, integrity, and persistence. Mentor teachers supported the students throughout the program. And at the end of the summer, students earned a certificate of completion that is included in their portfolio. Providing these experiences and removing barriers so all of our students can have them is a part of what it means for us as a pathways district. So I want to thank the Department of Education and Greater Twin Cities United Way, all of our community partners, and I especially want to thank Kathy Funston, our Director of Partnerships and Pathways, for her work to develop and maintain those partnerships for the benefit of our students. So as you see, we are continuing with the launch and implementation of pre-K 12 pathways. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. Next, we will go to board member reports. Any board member reports? Director Holliker.
Thank you, Dr. Battle and members of the board. I am writing this to inform you of my intent to resign from my position on the board of ISD 191 effective at the close of this meeting. When I ran for the board back in 2018, I had two children in school full time. Now that I have two more little ones, both under 14 months and a much fuller plate, I feel that I can't properly devote the time and energy needed to be an effective member of this board. Because of this, I feel that it is in the best interest if I step down. I've had such a wonderful experience getting to work with all of you and to know you on a personal level. Thank you for everything you have done for me. I appreciate it more than you will ever know.
Thank you, Jen. It's hard news to receive, and we understand. I'll make an exception given this unique nature of your report, board members. Do you have any comments for Jen?
I'll just say, Jen, you and I joined at the same time, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you. I'll just say, Jen, you and I joined at the same time and it's been a pleasure getting to know you. And I think I texted you this, you'll, you'll definitely be missed and we'll, we'll miss you and we wish you nothing but the best in the future.
Director Schatz.
Yeah, Jen, I think you had an amazing start to the, to your tenure in the board. You just came on running and really made a lot of valuable contributions. And we will miss the babies on Zoom. So yes, really.
Thank you. Director Tester.
Yes, Jen, just like Scott said, I think the three of us are all new together as board members. And I have valued getting the opportunity to know you a little bit better. Get to see your two new children. And more importantly, just your, your voice and your activism on this board has been valuable. Especially in the committees that you've represented and served and going through what I would have to say and what people have told me, this is a unique board experience for two, for the two years that we've started as board members. And that you've handled that through all of your growth personally with your family very gracefully. And appreciate everything that you have brought to serving our students. I know you will continue to do so, even though you will not be at all of these board meetings.
Thank you, Leslie. Director Courier.
Yes, thank you. Jen, thank you for all of your work thus far. But looking ahead, I hope you reconsider and join our board in the future. Because children do grow up. And you have been such a great board member so far. And given this experience, you can take this forward and build on it and return. And even with more experience and more wisdom and come back and contribute even more. So thank you for your service, but we're looking forward to you possibly coming back. So thank you and best wishes.
Thank you, DeeDee. Eric.
Well, Jen, thank you so much for the time you put into this board. You know, in any group of people, there are always people that are tend to be more outgoing and verbal and outspoken and others that are a little bit more quiet and, and you know, I think it's a surprise that you typically fall into that ladder apart from often. But I got to tell you, there's a number of evenings I leaving, I went home and I thought, you know, Jen turned her mic on and said something that just I had not even thought about. It was very insightful. It was, it was right on spot. And I was always amazed with the input you had that you brought to the table. So thank you very much. The hardest part about service and volunteering and helping out your community is it can become overwhelming. I totally understand that. And the best thing you can do for yourself is, and you know, is to know when it's time to say no and step back and take care of yourself and your family. So I think you're making the right decision. Thank you very much for your time and service to this board and this community.
Thank you, Eric. Teresa, did you want it? Did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yes, thank you, Chair Al. So first, I want to thank you for your service and your faith in me to select me as superintendent. First and foremost, you prioritize children. And because your children are part of this community, I was especially moved that you put that faith in me. And so I want to thank you for your wise, stable counsel. I also want to thank you for seeing me and knowing I had a different lived experience when shortly after the killing of George Floyd, we had a meeting. And the first thing you wanted to know was, how are you? Because when he called out for his mother, you and I both were very touched by that in a different way. So I wanted to thank you for that. And I'll, I'll miss you and I hope you know you're a member of this community. So just thank you.
Thank you all. I did with help prepare a brief statement. Jen, I just want to give you my personal thanks for your service to this board, to the district, and to the 191 community. It's been a pleasure to get to know you and to work with you over the past two years. As others have already mentioned, I don't think you could have picked a more important and more demanding time to serve in this, in this role. We've had laughter and we've had tears. Facing the kind of challenges many boards may not see over decades or more, I know all of us have appreciated your thoughtful questions and insights, your positive attitude, and your collaborative approach as we navigated those challenges together. This board has made difficult decisions and we did a better job because you were here with us. So thank you for your service. And please keep in touch. You are still here. We're still all here and coffee shops are open. So thank you. Were there any other board member reports? No? Okay. Oh, I almost forgot. I'm sorry. It's remote and I wanted to present to you on behalf of the board with a little bell. We can figure out how to get that to you. There is an inscription on the base honoring your, your, your years served here and it's inscribed with your name. So thank you again. All right, on to the business meeting. Starting with the consent agenda, although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Is there anything that board members would like to move for separation? Seeing none, I will take a motion. Moved by Director Chester, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Courier. Ms. Candy, would you please call the roll?
Chester?
I.
Courier?
I.
Paul Wager?
I.
Hugh?
I.
Miller?
I.
Schatz?
I.
Alt.
I. And the motion carries. Next, on to new business. We will be starting taking action on awarding the sale of refunding bonds with Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, and Jeff Sealy with Ellers. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
I'll start off, Jeff, with just a little intro to the fact that we sold bonds today that Jeff is going to give us information around. And so there, I just want to make sure that all board members are aware that there is a sale day report that was added this afternoon to the board book. So you should have that available to you as well. And that's the data that Jeff will be covering. And then maybe after his report, then if you would like for me to read the recommendation, I could do that at that point. All right. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you then so that you can provide us with the information we need to know about the sale of bonds today.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. As you know, we sold bonds today for the refunding of your 2011 A bonds. Those were issued back in 2011 in the amount of 16,000, 16,575,000. Those are alternative facility bonds. So we refinanced or refunded them today with the sale of these bonds and we received four bids on it. The winning bidder was BNY Mellon Capitals out of New York. And the, their bid had a true interest cost of 1.17%. So the high bid was 1.46%. So all four were very good bids, but we're seeing incredible rates right now. The lowest that we've probably ever seen. It's, it's just kind of crazy out there on tax exempt bonds right now. So congratulations on the timing because that worked very well for you. So I gave you a pre-sale report. It's in your board packets. And here's the bottom line. So the resulting savings to the taxpayer is $2,242,000. That represents a 14.1% net present value benefit. And it has been a long time since I've seen a 14.1% net present value benefit. That is extremely high. So to just kind of go through the report quickly here, if you look at the attachments, page one, you can see BYN Mellon is the winning bidder. And the reoffering yield is actually the true interest rate that you're receiving on each one of those maturities. Each, each principal payment or maturity has its own interest rate. So 0.24% for next year's principal payment, all the way up to 1.35%. Those are your true interest rates on those bonds. And again, each one has its own interest rate. So you'll be saving money from 2022 through 2030. And of course, that money is going directly back to the taxpayers. This is not money that's freed up for expanding or spending on other types of expenditures. Instead, it is a direct savings to the taxpayer. And it's almost $250,000 a year for each of those years. So other bidders, Hilltop of Dallas, Texas, Bairdall, Milwaukee, and Morgan Stanley out of New York. Those are the other bids that rounded out the proposals. So taking a look at it, the next page, we're issuing $11,485,000 worth of bonds. The reoffering premium, the premium is money, and I think we've talked about this before, money given to you upfront. And the way it's generated, if, if you look back on the winning bid, you can see an interest rate of 4% and that drops to three and two. But the reoffering yield is much lower. What, what happens is you're actually going to pay that higher coupon. But they give you money in order to do that. Why? Think of it from an investor's standpoint. It really isn't that attractive for me to invest or buy a bond that pays me 0.23%, right? So the underwriter buys it, offers it to me as a retail buyer for 4% earnings. And now that's a good return in today's market. But in return, I don't pay just par, you know, face value for the bonds. I actually pay like a dollar five for it or 105%. So that extra 5% goes directly back to you to offset the difference between the actual interest rate you're paying and what the market interest rate is. So that million dollars, $1,477, actually goes back towards savings for the taxpayers. So that's just a little bit of a premium. Just hit a few other items here. You can see on the attachment page five, that is your new debt service. That's something that Lisa will be very interested in. You can see the principal interest payments by date there. And then of course, the big news, there it is on page six, about $250,000 a year savings for about $2 million, $2.25 million in savings. So you have a resolution and, oh, and I also include the rating report for anyone who wants to read how your district was, was rated. I won't go through that, but it's the credit opinion from Moody's. You have a resolution from you. That resolution awards the sale to the winning bidder.
So the recommendation before the board is that the Board of Education adopts the formal resolution awarding the sale of general obligation alternative facilities refunding bonds, Series 2020A, in the original aggregate principal amount of $11,485,000. Fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, providing for their payment and providing for the redemption of bonds refunded.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Jeff. I will take a motion to approve.
I will.
Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Second by Director Miller. Questions or comments? Well, I really appreciate that we're doing this again, that we're able to save our taxpayers to the tune of $250,000 annually. Just nice, nice to have a little bit of good news like that. So thank you very much. And Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Courier?
I.
Paul Wager?
I.
Hugh?
I.
Miller?
I.
Schatz?
I.
Alt?
I.
Chester?
I.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yes, you too. And that was our one new business item. So I will declare us adjourned. In light of Director Howiger's resignation, we are journeying to a workshop for board planning. And it will focus on an appointment to fill the vacancy. Erin, do we need a couple of minutes pause between?
We could just pause for about one minute, then we should be able to switch over.
Great.
Jamie?
Hi, DeeDee.
Yes, I have a big note on my paper here to get the timing of the end of the workshop, correct?
Uh, yes, I would be grateful.
Okay. You're, you won't be here for the workshop, correct?
I wasn't planning on it, but I can be if I need to.
Well, I, I just wanted to let you know I have a big note to myself.
Okay.
At the end of the time.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jamie. All right, I think we should be okay to start since it's been about a minute. So in board book, people will see that we've got a number of documents. Wanted to start by talking about the decision process. And board members are just going to go through this. I kind of designed the agenda to be kind of a menu where we can pick the items that we want. And then at our next meeting on the 22nd, we will take action on what is discussed tonight. So in terms of the decision process, I'll open it up for discussion in terms of, there are two different options. MSBA's recommendation is that if we have six or fewer applicants, the board simply selects and approves the nominee. If there are six or more applicants, then we would conduct interviews. The second option is simply to opt for interviews regardless of how many applicants we have.
Just clarification, this is just to complete the remaining two years. And then if they choose to seek reelection, they would be going to file and then go through the formal election process in two years.
Correct.
My vote is for option one, the MSBA recommendation. Because that seems like it would be a more expedient more expedient route than conducting interviews and trying to figure out schedules, especially as we're doing them remotely. Not that I want to rush the process and not find the right person, but it's October, middle of October. And we have, ideally, this person would start onboarding as quickly as possible with whoever's elected after the elections. with whoever's elected after the elections in November. And then would be able to ideally kind of get up to speed to start in January. And so doing the multiple rounds of interviews with each person seems like it would take longer and not and it may result in.
So just one comment on that, basically the timeline for each. And we, in terms of the timeline, then lands us at taking action on appointing that one meeting in December, that first meeting in December. So that's the earliest that we really would be able to, since all of this, any action is that takes place is going to take place in a regular board meeting. Yes, you're right, there don't have to be other, you know, we'd have to have specials meetings for the interviews. And, you know, well, the last time someone was appointed, it was basically two rounds of interviews with group interview, the first round, and then narrowing it down to two finalists. And then the second interview was just with those two finalists. And then at the at the next regular board meeting, that's when the vote was officially taken. So just to just to provide a little.
Yeah, sure, sure. Okay, so then it's okay, so it ends up at the same spot. It just seemed that the that's, well, I know that the board selecting someone. Anytime you have interviews, you've got multiple people involved in trying to figure out schedules and things like that. Feels like it would be more chaotic, especially as we have other things coming up this fall that are also on our docket discussion and evaluation.
Actually, Scott had his hand up first.
Two things. One is just a clarification because the document they sent out says if there are six or fewer applicants, the board would select and approve. But if there are six or more or that the mature, what happens if there's exactly six, which which category of those two options?
Oh.
If it, because it's a six or fewer and then six or more right below it.
We can, we can adjust that if that's the one that we go for. Yeah.
So that's my one question. And the other piece is with option one, does that mean there would be no interviews? Because I feel like I've hired enough people in my life to know that what people, how people come across and a resume or an application, the best candidate may emerge very quickly from doing an interview that may not have been necessarily the best candidate on paper. So I I feel pretty strongly that needs to be some sort of an interview process. It's part of this.
So I would say, well, just to clarify, number one, so under option one, six or more applicants would mean there would be interviews. I'm just taking notes on this. Five or fewer would be a point.
Okay, even if it's five or fewer, I still want to have at least a a conversation with those those individuals would be my preference.
Great. Yep. And I I not knowing where everybody was, that's we've got on the table, so.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
Scott, did you have an opportunity to see the questionnaire document that was submitted also?
Briefly.
So just to be clear, we did attempt to put quite a lot of questions in there that would probably arise in an interview. And that would be basically an application form that's required by any candidate to fill out. So you you're correct, there would not be a formal interview in that first scenario. But there would be an opportunity to get some insight into each candidate's perspective on on certain things and how they approach situations. So throwing that out there, I think it's also fair to just remember that we're in a cycle of election right now. And so with five candidates and three seats open for election, one would assume that one or two possible candidates applying applying to the art, this, this, this method that we're discussing may already have be well known by us in the community.
That's certainly true.
Leslie, you had your hand up?
Yeah, that was kind of where I was going is wondering with timing if we if we, like, how long would it be open in case two of the people that were running for election this year wanted to, didn't get elected, but wanted to come in in the interim, like, what, would they miss that deadline? If that were the case.
The deadline is that the the application timeframe would would, well, it, depending on what we've discussed tonight, our next board meeting is on the 22nd. And the proposed time when application window would open Friday, October 23rd, and then would close Friday, I believe it's November 6th, after Election Day. Okay. I think there is one question, not knowing if we're going to know the results of the election. Obviously, if we don't, you know, that might be something that would cause us to come back together and revise the application timeline. But when I created this, the I my assumption was kind of optimistic that we would know what the outcome of the election. Give the applicants those additional days after Election Day to to make.
Abigail, why don't we, why don't we have Jamie or somebody do a little clarification with the Secretary of State's office on that? Because I don't believe if there's a requirement for a ballot recount for other races, I can't imagine what race that would be. It occurs out of the out of the third. I'm not 100% sure that holds up every other race on the ballots.
Yeah.
I I I would be a little skeptical if that's the case. My guess is they could call things like city council and school board races the night of or the next day.
Without, except there, I I have my mail-in ballot in my living room and it has to be mailed by the third and received by the 10th, which means they may still be getting help in the mail after the sixth. So, yeah, it's if it's a runaway, they may know, but there's, you know, another 10,000 absentee ballots that are there that are still in the mail between the the sixth and the 10th. That could impact the results, especially in a local election that doesn't tend to get 100% of the votes.
So that's a good point, Scott. So perhaps we shift the proposed timeline, application timeline, so that we don't run into that.
Is if we moved it to the next Friday, is that too late? Does that back everything up too much?
Uh, let me look at it.
Because I would hope by the 13th, we would know.
Yep.
Maybe not every election result, but hopefully we would at least know the school board results by then.
Well, we don't have an unlimited amount of time to play with here. We're we're kind of up against a hard, couple of hard possibilities. So let's let's play this the other way. What's the worst case scenario? If all five candidates walk in on October 23rd and we all put in an application for this role, if if one, if someone wins it, then I assume we just throw the application in the trash, right? I mean, so.
That's true.
Maybe we just encourage the candidates running to cover their bets and apply and open it up to anybody else that wants to throw their hat in and, you know, that is a filing date also.
So keep it it, because I, the only, the only instance in which delaying it by a week, Scott, would affect our timeline is if we have two rounds of interviews, unless we want to. So I think Eric, your point probably is a fair one that, you know, people can, you know, hedge their bets if they, you know, if they want to apply. And we just keep the the application timeline closing on the sixth. And of course, if, you know, if for some unforeseen reason, there still isn't clarity, you know, we still have the app, the ability to to change our minds.
Would it be appropriate for Jamie or somebody to reach out to all five of the candidates and just letting them know what's what's happening and kind of encourage them if they may be so inclined to continue on to apply by that deadline?
Um, well, I think there's going to be enough information out there from our communications department that it's not going to.
Likely.
Yeah, it's, I think.
Who's to say for somebody to miss out, but you're probably right.
I think, I think.
If they're running, I would hope they'd be up enough on what's happening for something like that, that they'd be aware.
Right. So back to the back to the question of interviews versus option for no interview and and an intro, appointment or interview, depending on the number of people that apply.
I would, I agree with Scott. I really want to think that we should interview everybody because people show up differently when writing, especially if it's not your strongest suit. Or maybe it's not your first language. And so I don't, I don't want us to be making scoring or assumptions or anything based off of how somebody writes and allow that opportunity to have come out in person in a meeting and being able to answer questions more in person.
And the Congress can be true, too. Somebody might be really strong with writing. DeeDee?
This was an intriguing exercise for me. So usually I'm not at a loss for words. Well, I'll just, I'll put it out there. I I'm the chair of the 917. I'm on, I'm the chair of the 917 board. And they're on a fiscal year. So I need to have the conversation with our board. Do you want me to resign off that board at at the end? Well, then this opportunity came up. So of course, I'm already thinking, is this an opportunity I need to look at? So that I can that I, in good faith, I can be, continue my work on on this board and on the 917 board. So I I'm sharing that with you that that I might consider this. So so that's why I can't give too much opinion on what you need to do here.
So DeeDee, I think you're we lost you for a minute.
Um, quickly though, going in, uh, going into timing on that, though, like for an, like for an appointment or a selection with this, would the person replacing Jen be sworn in in January along with the new elected, newly elected? Or are they sworn in earlier? Okay.
Yeah, well, everybody would be sworn in that first meeting in January, the organizational meeting. Yep.
So I I I share that. When, when this all came up, it was, oh, my goodness. So.
So you'll be abstaining from discussion on this?
I'll be abstaining from what?
Discussing this.
Yes.
With us. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just going to listen.
Great. Thank you. Eric?
So I'm okay with the interviews. That's fine. That's where we're at right now. I'm talking about interviews versus not, right? I'm okay with interviews. I I think we need to discuss what those would look like and the structure, not necessarily what we're actually asking. But if you remember, when we went through the superintendent selection process with Dr. Battle, we had a pretty you know, a pretty detailed methodology that we went about writing our questions. And and we made sure that that we didn't, I'm trying to remember, I think we didn't televise the first set so that the other candidates couldn't prepare, you know, unfairly in advantage and things like that. And and I think MSBA, if I remember right, was recommending a group interview, if that's correct. And I have some hesitations about that, to be perfectly honest. It's it's not like a forum that you're having with the, you know, Chamber of Commerce or something. This is very different. It's a job interview. So I I would feel a little, I'm a little reluctant to bring more than one candidate in at a time. Then we start considering the fact of all the time that, I mean, and everybody here, I'm sure might have blocked it out, but probably if you dig a little bit, you'll remember the pain of interviewing process for the superintendents and what we had to go through. And so I just, I want us to think through all that a little bit and and with the reality of what's involved. If we do go the the interview route, we'll have to put into it some work process.
Yeah, I think, speaking for myself, it's it's a fast track timeline and we don't really have much choice because we are required to fill the vacancy as expeditiously as possible. So what we might normally want to do may or may not be possible. In terms of interview versus not interview, I agree that interviewing really does give us the best read of a candidate between the paper application and interview. And we know what we've been through the last couple of years. And we don't know what the next couple of years are going to look like. So I think doing our due diligence with the interviews makes the most sense. Darcy, to your point, timing is a concern. And I think in in my opinion, compromise would be we do the group interviews once, like making this up a Tuesday night and the and the next night on Wednesday. The first night is the, you know, the large group interview, the the second, in the second night is the smaller interview or actually, it would have to be separate because we need to take action on reducing the pool. So it would still be two nights of interviews, just not one on top of the other.
Actually, Abigail, I'm gonna let's try, I I I think we need to, there's a sequence of things we have to kind of resolve to that drive each other and they're interrelated. And and you you made a comment and so I, because I had read the state statute a couple of times already. I went back just now to look at it again. Um, there actually is no reference about the timing necessity of replacing the role. Which seems a little odd, but they they they, I can't see that immediately here. Yeah, no, there's nothing here. It just says that it needs to be filled, basically. Which isn't to say we can take forever and ever, I'm sure. But I thought really what would drive our timing needs is this concern about whether, when we're going to have the follow-up election for this role. But we might need to have that conversation first. That probably can backwards set our timeline, I would think, on.
Well, I disagree, Eric. I think that's, I think I I think we we need to decide interviews because we're not going to, I mean, realistically, we're not going to go into January, right? I mean, we can't extend this into out into January in terms of interviews, if that's the route that we choose to go. The the special election is a big question mark at this point in terms of the timing.
I was gonna ask about that. So we have to have, so they're not, we're not saying that they will be appointed to fill out Jen's term. We're saying they would be appointed to fill out until the special election.
Yes.
And then the special election, they would fill out the rest of her term after that. Is that okay?
Yes. So and basically what we're looking at, and I, you know, we can jump ahead to the to the special election conversation. The recommendation from MSBA is to stick with Election Day um. Twenty twenty one, because that's when voters are expecting to vote. There is another possibility of having a special election in February, depending on the congressional election. But again, there's a lawsuit pending on that. And um. That's where the question mark comes in, if February is really going to be an option. I I know in years past, when we held elections on dates other than Election Day. We have gotten feedback from the community that they felt that the election should have been held on Election Day. Sometimes, you know, those elections simply have to be held. On our timeline and when we need to have them. Held, but so that's kind of, that's kind of where we are right now. February is a possibility, not a given. And then there are other dates too.
So if a special election lands on Election Day, so like November of next year. Would that person who is appointed be the only name on the ballot? Or could somebody else apply for election to complete that term still too?
Yep. It's not, it's it's just an election anybody can run.
And the special election would just be for that last one year.
Right.
Correct. Correct.
Got it.
And the. One thought about hosting it in November, it gives the per, the the appointee and the community. Ample time to evaluate the work, the quality of the work, if the person likes the work. And then there's, you know. You have a few months to kind of work it through.
A couple of additional things, if you have not read the statute. First of all. Once we make the appointment, the person actually cannot serve for thirty days till thereafter. There's a practice, there's a, that allows for a potential petition disagreement from the community. First statute. So if we were to have it, go with the February date. And we didn't, you know, if they, if we appointed them January, they're in essence, aren't going to serve at all. Because they would then be up for reelection immediately. The other thing I think we need to talk about is what's entitled with the, entailed with a special election. So I believe we can curtail the amount of polling stations for a special election. We don't have to have as many open as a general election, but we do carry the cost of that election. That's not correct, Abigail?
Yes, and Teresa, I think you had some like ballpark figures to share with us. In terms of a special election on its own date versus a special election on Election Day.
Yes, and I asked Lisa Ryder to fill in the last levy referendum was approximately forty thousand dollars. The November twenty nineteen. So for any election, the county of charges us. So Lisa can give you more information about that. With a history of your previous elections before my tenure, which were much lesser in cost.
Right. So as I understand it, you know, if you compare to the twenty eighteen election, which was for school board members at that time. That election cost thirty one thousand nine hundred and twenty two dollars. So the difference between the thirty one nine and the forty thousand that you just heard Dr. Battle speak to. That really was around the fact that the levy referendum requires far more mailings and postage was required for that. And due to the absentee ballots and the law changes that had occurred in FY nineteen. That meant that we needed to, I should say, by fall of nineteen. We needed to then have additional staff to assist us with the absentee ballot application. So I don't know that we're going to see that necessarily go away or lessen. I do anticipate we would, we would need to plan for that actual casual and overtime assistance during a special election. So the thirty one nine might be increased by that amount of about thirty five hundred. I'm not sure if we'll incur the cost of postage. It's true that if it's just us on the ballot. We could limit the postage loc, or the polling locations to our combined locations that we have already preapproved. But the fact of the matter is that you're still going to incur those costs of the county sending the ballots. And we have to estimate how many ballots we're going to need and whatever is printed is what we pay for. All of this is something that we would work closely with the counties. But I I I'm not certain that we'd see a cost that's less than the thirty one nine we incurred previously in eighteen. Doing a special election of our own.
Well, and there's nothing else on the ballot right now for next Election Day. That I'm aware of.
For November of twenty one?
Yeah. So it's kind of six to one, half dozen of the other. Do people have a sense, since we're talking about special election, do people have a sense as to a preference?
Okay, um, so I'll modify my original comment about. Um, option one, number one, I agree that, I agree that both paper and. People in person-ish are helpful ways to evaluate. To evaluate someone, I mean, really, when it comes down to it, we don't have, we don't have the luxury of getting to know anyone with any depth. You know, in this, in this tight timeframe. And so we can only go on what really any voter can go on, you know, with learning about a candidate. You know, for an election essentially, so. But I agree that giving them both those opportunities of the application and the in-person. Needs to happen. And if we're doing them via Zoom, then we can rattle them out, you know, in a couple, couple nights. You know, and we will need to be concerned about people being in the same room and having access to each other's comments. You know, things like that. So um, so I'll modify my original. But I guess I sort of assumed the interview would be part of that anyway. So that's, that's. And uh, we're gonna, we should wait till the regular election. This should be, this should be. Can't bring someone on for a couple of months and then maybe have them go off again. And someone else come on. It's too disruptive to the boards, too disruptive to the work of the district. It's impossible for anyone to get a handle on anything in a couple of months. And so we're putting that new, um, that new person at a disadvantage right off the gate. If we're gonna hold a special election in, after two months, which they may or may not win. So I think the election has to take place the next fall to minimize. Or self and then whatever happens, you know, then happens.
Great. Thank you, Darcy. So it sounds like interviews it is. Comments on special election on Election Day twenty twenty one.
I like it being on Election Day twenty twenty one, just because if the community has had issues with anything outside of that date. I just, it's just easier because people already have that as an election day. Thing in their head that that I think it doesn't spur any kind of, you know, confusion or issue that. You know, and and if there's other things on the elect, I don't, I don't know if it'll ever save us any money. But I mean, if it's on Election Day and there's other things on the ballot, then maybe, maybe it's something that that would be okay too. Um, one other quick question though, um. Has any, well, this would only maybe be you, Abigail and DeeDee. But ha- have either of you been around for a special election of of board members? And like, were there many candidates? Like, are we thinking of six or more or?
Why do you think Abigail got this game? So.
I think Abigail might be able to answer this question.
I I can, yeah. So I was, I went through the interview process in twenty thirteen. And there were two, there were, I think, ten or fourteen applicants. And that was a group interview. And then the, the second interview was, you know, the two finalists. And yeah, so as a group interview, it was interesting. At the same time, I mean, DeeDee, you probably can speak to what the experience was as from an interviewer's perspective. That probably is, is. I don't, if you feel comfortable, I don't want to put you in a, in a bad position.
Well, it was an efficiency. You know, when you have thirteen applicants. It was an efficiency factor to to narrow it down.
It was about the scheduling of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, Abigail, not to second guess our predecessors, but I, I have to guess, that's exactly why. And I I guessed that before DeeDee answered the question, that that's why is because of the volume they did that. I I would argue that we could probably do the same process if we have an efficient questionnaire form. So we could, we could. I would love to have a large body of candidates. I'm a bit skeptical that's going to happen. But in the case, we could make a decision and I draw a number or set a number and say, if we reach this threshold, we will make a cut. And widow down to a certain number, then we will interview those numbers. That would be my preference, I think. Based on what we know about the people and 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 the their answers to the questionnaires.
And understand, I'm not pushing either. I just was sharing my perspective. But yeah, that's a fair point. So.
I'd be comfortable with what I think I heard you say, Eric. So if we had, say, thirteen applicants, like we did once before. Maybe we do that initial screening and then, you know, like when you review resumes and you're hiring for a job. You don't interview every person who sent in a resume. You review their resumes and you narrow it down and interview the top. However many candidates we decide are acceptable that we would want to interview. It doesn't have to be all twenty candidates that may apply. It's maybe it's the top two or three or four.
I'm just, would be concern is to making sure we have some sort of metric that justifies how we're evaluating each of those.
Sure. Which we also had with the superintendent hiring.
Yeah.
Eric, we'd like you to put together a twelve page metric for this and we'll give you till Monday.
It was your idea.
I'll just hit send. I have the email already ready for you.
Does that sound, I mean, in terms of and and thinking optimistically, you know, again, not knowing how many applicants we we really will get. Is is having a cut, you know, a cut number acceptable to folks? If we have a metric for evaluating the, the applications? Or do we feel that we really need to interview each?
Well, that's where the metric comes in, you know. I mean, that's the guide to what we, what characteristics. What experience, what the answers are, something for us to determine. What that. What that cutoff is, if there is one. And so. This otherwise, we really, you know, there's, you know, as we've discussed, there's, you know, there's a lot of intrinsic things that people bring. That may not show up on the application that they have. And so unless we have, unless we have a metric. That says, here are the things that are necessary for this position. And. Then otherwise, we really don't have any way of evaluating one, one application or the other. In which case we need to interview.
Scott or Leslie?
I don't have anything to add beyond what I've already said.
Leslie?
No, I think I'd, I'd be interested in seeing what the, what the metric is too. Cause I, cause outside of some of the the questions that we were asking on the application. I think it's important to, to be cognizant of. Different voices and experiences that may not be present on this board that may not reflect in an application.
So maybe what we do. Is. Eric, if you could come up with a metric, if you haven't already. And we plan a discussion at, in a workshop on the twenty second. Because I think deciding on the twenty second. If the metric is or is not going to work for us, is not going to impact anything at that point. We can.
As much as I, as much as I don't want to appear like I'm dodging work. I will point out that I may be one of these applications. I probably should not be writing the metric.
I was, I was gonna mention that. Yeah.
Got it. So then you probably shouldn't be participating in this conversation.
Well, to the extent of that kind of decision making, yes, correct, yes.
Okay, so we've narrowed ourselves down to four.
We barely have a quorum now.
I have a doctor's note that says I can't create a metric.
That doesn't work, Darcy. Okay, um.
Fine, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you. So we'll plan to, we'll plan to discuss it in a workshop. On the twenty second.
Eric, will you just send me the metric that you weren't gonna do anyway?
Okay, so I have interviews. Yes. Pending metric conversation. Election Day twenty twenty one. So let's see, that brings us to the interview options. Well, that kind of narrows it down right there. We kind of know, because if you look at item two under the interview options, if there are only two candidates. That defines our process and number three defines the process if there are more than two. Unless people have questions or, you know, edits to make. Basically, we would take action on the twenty second to define the application. Process, actually. That would be a different date. Have to do a special meeting. First round of interviews. Would be in November. November twelfth, we would. Take action on, I guess. Taking action on the special election date could happen November twelfth still, because that's not going to change anything. And then December would be when we would select and appoint to fill the vacancy. And then sworn in on January fourteenth. And then the only difference between. The first option and the second option is that we have more people and we need to figure out what that, what that means.
So one more question.
Yes, Scott.
Think someone pointed out the statute requires thirty days from the time they're, like, it's the time they take office, is that right? So looking at my calendar, January, I think eleventh. Tenth. Fourteenth is the second. So we would need to have, have a, the appointment completed by, you know, probably no later than Friday. the appointment completed by, you know, probably no later than Friday, the December 11th, in order to meet that 30-day. I guess technically Monday, December the 14th would be right at 30 days or 31 days before the next, before the January Board meeting. You're muted. Abigail, you're muted.
And in, in all options, December 10th is the appointment date, the date that we. So yeah, we're good on that point. But thank you.
So we're looking at late November, early December, very early December for the interviews. Okay.
Yeah, knowing that December, if, if we want. If we want them sworn in with the. The elected officials.
Yes.
Then December 10th is our date.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? I think we're pretty clear on what we want to do. I've taken notes and. I will revise this. And Teresa, we will make sure to add a, a topic, probably because we already have a workshop planned on the 22nd anyway. Right?
Yes.
Yep. And. So probably what we'll do then is that'll be the second workshop topic. And DeeDee and Eric, probably you can just excuse yourselves, just so that, you know, if we're going to be talking, continue to talk about the appointment process. And there's a possibility that one of you might be applying. We need to make sure we keep things clean. Awesome. If there's nothing else, anything else?
Yes, no. Just note the time, direct to courier.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.
Have a good night and have a good weekend.
Bye. Yep.